Okay, we are ready, Madam Chair.
Perfect, thank you. I call this August 2nd, 2022 Planning Zone and Commission Meeting to order. Everyone please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Clerk, could you please take a roll call?
Tonight's roll call, Monaco is excused. Stags?
Here.
Burhe?
Here.
Chardonnay is excused. Hornet Seth?
Present.
And Chair Sullivan?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Okay, now we have citizens' comments on any subject except those items that are scheduled for public hearing. Those who have signed in will be given the first opportunity to speak. And time is limited to three minutes per speaker. And 36 minutes total time, hopefully we don't have that for this agenda. So, Madam Clerk, is there anyone signed in?
Yes ma'am, there is the first person, it's Cheryl Sees.
Okay, Ms. Sees?
I'm here to oppose Resolution 2022-016, granting a conditional use permit to Robert and Susan White to install a radio antenna on Lot 14A, Block 17, Seward Regional Town Site, White Replat, located at 313 Sixth Avenue, within an auto-commercial zoning district. So I sent a letter to each of you, as well as to counsel, on my reasons. But I can't find it for myself. Part of my reason for this opposition is, I wonder whether this invites others to make and find approval for the same type of tower or greater. And I see this as a eyesore to the community. And the comparison between this and here, Fifth Avenue, the city's antenna and dishes, as well as GCI's, are for the public service wide. This is for private use.
Um, Ms. Sees, I just wanted to, I'm sorry, I want to interrupt you because I was, I just realized we were doing here, and I know Brent had told me about that. Your section on that is when we have a public hearing for the item itself. This is items other than the public hearing.
Oh, well, I wrote down the resolution, so I was curious about why it'd be up there during public consent.
No, that's when we actually have the resolution. This is for items other than, sorry about that.
Okay.
And I was like, okay, I was gonna let it go, but we probably have plenty of others. Anybody else? Do you have anybody else for?
Oh, sorry, no, no other citizen comments, thank you, sorry.
Anybody else who just would like to speak, anything to offer, other than the public hearing items? No? Okay, thanks. Okay, I'd like to have the approval of the agenda and consent agenda, and I'll need a motion and a second.
All for approval of the agenda and the consent agenda?
I'll second it.
Okay. Does anybody have any discussion to that effect? No? I will have one item that I'd like to bring, it's just an administrative change, or just an addition. On page 61 of the uplist packet, you'll have a comment from Becky Dunn. If you take a look at, she said, on the second sentence, it says, Dunn would support creative ideas to incent year-round renters. I believe that's incentive buys, year-round renters. And that's the only thing, it just probably got dropped off in a, you know, one of these pay-type.
Oh, for the minutes?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, yep, I'll make that as a housekeeping adjustment, thank you.
Okay. Sorry about that. Anybody else have anything of that? No? Okay. Madam Clerk, we have a roll call for the amended agenda.
Voting on tonight's agenda and consent agenda, Stags?
Yes.
Hornet Seth?
Yes.
Burhe?
Yes.
And Chair Sullivan?
Yes.
Your agenda and consent agenda are approved, and approved on your consent agenda are the June 7th, 2022, regular meeting minutes.
Yeah. Okay, next we have is the special orders, presentations, reports. And it doesn't appear we have any present proclamations and awards. So what I'll move on to is the city administration report, and I'll turn it over to Community Development Director, Jason.
Thank you. You guys have my report enclosed there. And I did want to make just a quick note that we will be working on kind of a systematic Title 15 adjustments and bringing those before your recommendations. We had some meetings today on updating our floodplain code. We've got meetings with FEMA, so that can be up to date. And then we'll slowly be kind of bringing those for you on a radio basis and a more systematic approach. That'd be hopefully helpful. And so, I'll do that in October. And then, yeah, other than that, we're just really busy right now. Especially the cemetery business, I think that's been a pretty, just that time of year when the ground is not thawed. I mean, the ground is thawed, and so, but yeah, happy to answer any questions on any specifics.
Commissioners, anything for Director Vicklin? I do have one thing, just to, as a point of clarification. We do changes to the titles. We need to have public hearings for those as well, don't we, for any of those that are done, or is that?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll have to schedule those in. Okay, I want to be sure that they're on that, okay.
Yep.
And so if there's nothing else, then I will move on to public hearings. So, the first public hearing item is Resolution 2022-16. Madam Clerk, could you read the title into the record?
Resolution 2022-016 is granting a conditional use permit to Robert and Susan White to install a radio antenna on Lot 14A, Block 17, Seward Regional Town Site, White Replat, located at 313 Sixth Avenue, within the auto-commercial zoning district.
I'll need a motion and a second, please.
I motion to put this right on this.
I'll say.
Okay. Alrighty, Administration, do you have a response to this one, anything to offer?
Yeah, I'll give you a little background on this application. So the location for this proposed radio antenna is at 313 Sixth Avenue, which is one block just east of where we're sitting currently. In Seward City Code, the land use table, definition, an antenna, or satellite, or personal TV antenna can be placed on a property outright, allowed outright. However, commercial communications tower requires a CUP in this district, which is an auto-commercial district. Commercial communications does not include an amateur radio antenna. According to the description the applicant provided, there, this radio antenna will broadcast a radio station. And didn't quite seem to fit the large commercial communications towers, towers that have gone in for, you know, GCI, Verizon. But doesn't quite seem to fit either the smaller satellite dishes or personal TV antennas. So we continue to require this CUP application. Staff was provided this application as well to review. The building department said that they would need this applicant, would need to get a building permit and provide structural engineering for both the tower and the foundation. Building inspector did look over the tower and the plans, and does not have any concerns for the tower failing or being blown over anyway. Fire department had no comment, Public Works was okay with it, as long as there were no guy wires toward the alley. The applicant has stated that there will be no guy wires on this tower. Harbor Department, no comment, Police Department, no comment, and Electric Department had no comment at the time. But since this was put out, the Electric Department has communicated with us that there are no regulations as far as where the tower needs to be placed in relation to telephone poles. But they provide, the Electric Department can provide input and guidance, but there's nothing strictly written in code for that. The recommended conditions, then, that we would require would be that the applicant must acquire a building permit and provide structural engineering for both the tower and foundation prior to installation. If any cabling or guy wires are used, they may not be placed near the alley. Then anti-climb panels must be installed on the lower portion of the tower, or fence must be built around the base of the tower. Community development staff does recommend approval of Resolution 2022-16, granting a conditional use permit to Robert and Susan White to install a radio antenna on their property at 313 Sixth Avenue.
Okay, thank you. So I guess what I'll be able to do now is open it. Unless, Jason, you have anything to say at this point? I'll open it as public hearing now, sorry.
I'm gonna let Ms. Griswold go.
The first person signed in is Carol Griswold.
Oh, sorry.
This is painted, too?
No.
Carol Griswold, Inside City Limits. This resolution erroneously focuses on the type of antenna and tower used instead of the purpose of the radio broadcast. It confuses an amateur radio operation, i.e. ham radio, with a radio station apparently because the tower is the same design and structure that might be used for both, and they might both use only one antenna. A local ham radio operator assured me that FCC rules for amateur radio regulations expressly forbid amateur radio operators from broadcasting to the general public. This is distinctly different from a radio station, for the commercial or non-commercial, and has different FCC rules. It is unfortunate that our code includes the unnecessary word "commercial" in the definition of a communications tower and associated code. The tower is the structure that supports the antenna, and the antenna receives and broadcasts a signal, whether it is for commercial or non-commercial purposes. Amateur radio antennas are those used for ham radio and have nothing to do with this radio broadcasting station. The use as a Christian radio station is more similar to a commercial radio station and commercial communications towers and antennas, and should follow Code 1510-250, including these guidelines. One, protect and promote public health, safety, and welfare. Two, ensure the facilities are compatible with adjacent land uses. Three, provide guidelines for the siting and design of communication facilities. Four, protect the city's environmental and economic resources, including the view shed. Five, minimize the number of towers by encouraging the co-location of facilities and maximizing the use of existing structures. The packet does not note that this proposed radio station, tower, and antenna is located on a house in the historic district. The house even has an historic walking towards sign in front. The map on page 12 should have also included this information. What is the visual impact of a tower up to 50 feet on a house in the historic district? Even signs cannot exceed the roof line of a building within the historic district. What is the height of the house? How far above the house will the tower and antenna extend? Up to feet, up to 50 feet is pretty high and impossible to hide. The packet does not note that the primary use around this location is residential, and the adjacent property to the north is own single-family residential. The brochure on pages 15 to 20 highlights a Roan self-supporting 25G tapered top tower. The 25G tower is only self-supporting up to 40 feet. A taller tower will need to be guided or bracketed. The tower and guidelines will be located by the short-term rental parking spaces and rear entrance to the lodging. What is the impact on the safety of the guests? For all these reasons and more, this CUP application to a radio station masquerading as an amateur radio operation should be denied. The applicant should be encouraged to apply for a conditional use permit for a communication tower under 1510-250. Thank you.
That's all that's signed in. Thank you. Okay, Ms. Sees, go ahead. Do you like to come up and speak?
I just signed in.
That's okay, come on up.
Sorry. Well, I don't need to reiterate this, because Brent already did. I echo everything that Ms. Griswold shared. This will obstruct, while it's a fine obstruction, the view both east and west of the mountains, east the bay. I'm concerned that if this one is approved, how many others are going to want to do the same thing? And its base, the base lists, what, 12 feet, I mean 12 inches? Is that accurate for this, for this high a tower, or should it be feet? And perhaps the Whites could do this on their property outside of town. And I, too, am concerned that this is being done in a historic house and in the historic district. Thank you.
Anybody else, nobody else signed in?
No, no.
Okay. Okay, I'd like to, I'll give Mr. White the opportunity to give us some information.
Robert White, I do live outside of town, but we do own the property at 313 Sixth. The tower is non-commercial. The specifications for the tower will be, for its installation, will be followed as per Roan's specifications. The radio tower, this is non-commercial. It's a nonprofit Christian broadcasting that would be broadcast from the top. So the communication, I'm not sure exactly how that comes in, but it's not a receiver, it's a broadcast mechanism. However, over the years, all the years that my father owned the property, has had multiple antennas on it, either for marine radio or for ham reception. He was never a ham operator, so he didn't transmit. But he had antennas on the property up to 50 feet before. However, they're in cotton trees, so it's a little different than. The tower specifications are what will follow in the construction. There again, I say it's a non-commercial structure. There's no, I get compensated for the electricity on the broadcast. There's no other monetary gain for me in it, so it's more of a voluntary courtesy to the community. Ideally, that is a better location than my house at mile three. The elevation would facilitate broadcasting to Lowell Point, as well as out the northern side of the community. At my place, Lowell Point would probably be excluded from the reception because it has Islam site, so it wouldn't do well over the hill here. Other locations, I don't own them, so that's the only location that works the best. I'd say that it couldn't be moved somewhere else. It's a 12-inch tower. Basically, it's, you know, a triangle this big. Height, as far as that is concerned, 50 is ideal, but it's not necessary to build that high. So if there is, I wasn't aware of any restriction on it, that 50 feet that required cable, guy wire. So there won't be a guy wire. So whatever height it has to be for that engineering will facilitate that. It's a service to the community, it's not a profit thing for me. Okay, any questions?
Commissioners, do you have any questions? I actually have a couple of questions, Mr. White.
Sure.
If you're okay. So first off, from my understanding, it is already authorized based on the kind of zoning he has, he can put something there, we know that right now. But can your antenna be possibly placed on another antenna area, say, like over here behind the city? The, where they have that large antenna support structure there? Could that be done and not affect the thing on down 313?
I think there's a little bit of conflict there with difficulties we've had there in the past. I've helped Dave Blotommer with his equipment there over the winter, and there seems to be, without caging it separately, and that's something that would have to be done inside the building.
So you haven't explored it quite yet?
No, it's a case of, there's, he has a lease for what he has there now. And I believe you'd have to get a lease for this tower in addition to that. And there's another station that broadcasts, who has their equipment in there. And what occurred last year a couple of times was, equipment got bumped or jostled or stepped on or whatever. It's a lot of wiring and stuff inside the building that caused several outages last winter, so.
Okay. What constitutes a non-commercial radio station?
Nonprofit, non-commercial. Christian Broadcasting is a nonprofit, they don't do advertising, they just broadcast their message.
Yeah, I would figure it could still be commercial and still be a nonprofit.
No, that's a Dave Becker question at this point.
Okay, yeah, I'm not sure.
He's the one who told me that it's a non-commercial situation. If anybody knows, it would be him.
All right, thank you. Are the, so you're not running, it'll be, who's running the actual program?
It's turquoise, well, turquoise broadcasting has the equipment here, and I forget the gentleman's name, he's down in Arizona. But I believe this is all Christian Broadcasting Network, and Becker would be operating it for them.
Maybe, will your individual that wants this be available for questions at some point in time? Because it sounds like there's a bit of a delta information from the actual physical structure putting it up and towards, in the broadcast a little bit.
Yeah, certainly, I'll give you his number.
Okay. So it's not enhanced, so technically it's not, although it's meeting somewhat of the definition of a ham radio, but it's going to be an actual broadcast. They see it's a bit of an apples and oranges. It's going out as a ham broadcast in some respects, like a ham, similar to a ham tower, but it's going wide broadcast and it's not doing the standard ham.
I'm not sure the frequency that it uses, to be honest.
Okay, let's see, and the antenna that was in the packet itself, it's the actual antenna?
That's the 25G.
Okay. And you expect it to be about 40 feet? Because when I was looking at that, beyond 40 feet, you'll have to have guy wires or something?
Yeah, so if that's the spec, what that's like, there'll be.
And just my own question is, like, the broadcasting and the power of the radio station that's going out, a lot of times, folks have a tendency to, you know, just my own, when I was at Miami University, our radio station was broadcasting so much that even with your, if you had speakers in your house and all the rest of that stuff, that would bleed into it, even if your stereo or whatever wasn't even on. I mean, is there some sort of, if it's going out that far, the power, what would it potentially, what provisions can be to protect the people that are close by?
If you have a frequency overlap, that's an FCC violation anyway.
Okay.
So they have to be far enough apart so that they're not conflicting in that way. Not to say that some stations don't do that, but it's not, ideally, the wattage, I don't know what it is, but ideally, the distance it's going to travel is going to be around seven miles. That's about it. It's contained inside the valley here. So there's no reason for it to be, you know, such a high output.
Yeah, I'm not overly familiar with that, I just know what I was exposed to, so that's something we may have to just look at with everybody so closely compacted. The Commissioners, have any questions? Brent, anything?
Good.
Good, okay. If we move forward with this, and Jason, tell me if this is the right way to do it, that what I'd like to be able to do is, with the CUP itself, can we add certain stipulations with this? For example, my question is if there's any delay of the transmission that is contained immediately, you know, that gets kind of controlled. If there's any prolonged non-useage of it, that something is, that just doesn't sit there and become a derelict thing, because like, if that gentleman says, yeah, I'm done, I want out, that there's a provision for it to go away, that kind of thing. And my concern is, again, if you do have to use the guy wires or the supporting wires.
No guy wires.
Not at all, okay. My other concern is, well, those are the things I'd say, those would be added to the CUP if we were to go forward with that. Oh, one other thing is that whatever the radio station is, that with the tower and everything, that it complies fully with all FCC regulations.
Application's gonna apply for.
Okay. All right, I don't know if it would change at all, would the historic house status change if I having a, nothing would change out there?
No, in fact, I could take a bulldozer tomorrow and flatten the house.
Right.
It's not, it's not a historic site. It's an element of the history of Seward, yes, because it was moved from the bluff above the lagoon to there in 1925.
But you know, you have that placard out front with the, does that get affected?
That doesn't, no. Take the house down, the sign could stay there.
Okay.
Or go wait for that matter.
Alrighty, with that, okay, thank you, Mr. White, for anything. Does anybody else have anything to offer?
So you, are you wanting to make those amendments, then?
If I can, yeah, that'd be possible, that's with those amendments that I suggested. And if we could, let's see, I guess if there's nothing else, then we will go ahead and call for vote.
So the amendments you're proposing, then, well, can we bite these out? Just to make sure we have them written. So we're gonna add a condition that the applicant must remove the tower if it's not being used for, do you, do you have a set timeframe? Like, if the tower has not been used for a year, would the tower get removed?
I think there's some requirements under the FCC that you have to, you know, either be on or off radio within a period of time. So I'd say, you know, six months, split the difference of some sort. There may be, it may be even less time, I don't know it, but minimal to that. And the other one I'm saying is, well, you don't have guy wires, and also obviously comply with, you know, fully FCC, but you'd have to do that anyway, eventually.
So we, yeah, we can add a condition that the applicant needs to supply the FCC certification before, before dislocation.
It would be helpful, yeah, that would be a bad idea, so we know it's... I think it protects not only the applicant, it protects all of us here in the neighborhood and the people in the neighborhood as well.
Okay, and then I can, if you're wanting me to, I can change the condition. Number two, right now, it says if any cabling or guy wires are used, they may not be placed near the alley, and I can change that to no cabling and guy wires need to be used?
Assuming the fact that he said that there wasn't going to be any, that would be probably, I think, some easier. Okay.
Are there any other besides those three?
That is what I have at this point, anybody else has anything to offer?
Well, if it's, if the property is non-commercial and the antennas are allowed, who are we to say that we can't? If the code and the codes are already saying it, we can't really change based on our feelings. I always said, because whereas at the Peninsula Borough meeting, and the first one I listened to, there was some, one of the, one of the, one of the ones I was listening to, they was talking about rezoning the area, so that somebody could build and put 30 houses in this little cove. And I'm like, oh heck no, you don't want that to happen. That's like, that's not really, get rid of the elastic part. And there was like six houses in this cove, with like a 200-foot opening into the cove, or whatever it was. And they, and I wasn't a part of it, but I got to watch it before my computer died. But they, they said, as much as I would hate to be you, losing your little nook of only six families in this village or cove, and putting the 30 houses, we can't say no to them, because he's doing everything. and putting the thirty houses, we can't say no to them because he's doing everything according to code. So we're doing it to code too.
We are doing code, but we're adding conditional use permits additional to that to make it work better within the area. And it's not denying him. But every, we can have conditional use, you know, additional things added on that we feel is appropriate to allow something to move forward. We're not stopping him. That's why I was saying.
Afterwards would be, that's where I was like, maybe it's like my grandma just wants the antenna so she can climb up there at ninety years old so she can clean her gutters. Which we all knew she didn't, but she refused to let her take her antenna down because that's how she got on her roof. In her mind, she got on her roof that way, she never did.
Right, but we also have an obligation of keeping it, whether it's a few shed or a few other things. We just want to be able to keep things reasonably, I mean, why would you want to have a derelict antenna on your property?
So she can all roof and clean her gutters. I agree with, I agree with that, but I was just trying to figure out with, we're trying to stay with our code. If only answer, or answers are based on code alone, then we can only go that far. Anything else would be...
But that's what the continual use permits are. That's why those addendums are put on there to make it a little bit more livable for the community, can save, address certain safety concerns or concerns for people along those lines. Because if, if all we did was say code and that's what code is, then we actually wouldn't even need a committee of some sort. Because code says this, then just drive on.
Let's do it.
Yeah. So I think.
One more comment?
Yes.
So I don't know how long the FCC application process would take. So if it comes up against the season, freeze up, I could put in the foundation for the tower. It's actually going to be part of the foundation for a fuel tank anyway. And that would be set in the concrete and that could be cut off later if it's not approved. So that's kind of where I'm at with it. But if it's, you know, if it takes till November before they make up their mind on the thing, ground starts to freeze, then it's going to be next spring before we can put this in.
Well, I understand, unless a lot of these things, it says you get, within six months you haven't done anything, then you have to, you know.
So if we could proceed at least that far up until a license is issued, then I'm not out anything.
No, there's all considerations because, as I say, it's beyond your control.
Yeah, exactly.
Carol Griswold. Another condition you mentioned was the interference. If there was interference, did you get that voted in? That's really important. It has happened here in town and it needs to be resolved really quickly.
Yeah, that was one of my first ones, I think, so it just gets addressed daily.
Right, it wasn't put down in writing.
But I think that, wouldn't that be an FCC consideration?
It makes the, it's part of the conditional use permit that you be more specific than happened. And you could require him to go back through the more appropriate code for communications towers. This isn't an antenna, it's a tower with an antenna and it's a radio broadcast. So you could require him to go back through the more appropriate code for this. It's not a ham radio station. Thank you.
Does anybody else have anything to offer? No? Madam Clerk, could we get a vote, please?
Did you mean to make an amendment formally or was that just direction?
Direction for the, the folks that, that see.
Okay, so voting on the approval of Resolution 2022-016. Hornsop?
Yes.
Staggs?
Yes.
Burhe?
No.
And Chair Sullivan?
Yes.
Okay. Actually, that motion is approved.
They approved the three out of four.
Correct.
Okay, and what we'll do at this point is move on to the next hearing. And that is Resolution 2022-017. Madam Clerk, could you read the title into the record?
Resolution 2022-017 is recommending city council approval of the land use amendment to rezone lots twenty-one through twenty-three, block ten, original townsite of Seward Lobner Edition from an urban residential zoning district to auto-commercial zoning district.
Thank you. I'll need a motion and a second, please.
Motion for a approval of Resolution 2022-017.
Second.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Administration, could you please provide a comment?
Yes, so Exaclation Guides has applied to rezone the properties located at eleven oh four and eleven hundred Second Avenue. They are currently zoned urban residential. And as Exaclation Guides would like to rezone them to auto-commercial. The property just to the east of these properties is zoned auto-commercial. As well, properties south of them are zoned single-family. And then the properties to the west and north are urban residential. Currently, this location is used as parking in twenty, I believe, yeah, twenty nineteen. Exaclation Guides received a conditional use permit to use this land as a parking lot since parking lots are not allowed outright in urban residential zone. However, as they use this for parking, they discovered that the majority of their clients don't actually drive their business to go on activities. And if they do, they can park in the city, they have parking just across Third Avenue. Also, the majority of people who end up using their parking lot are individuals exploring harbor, eating at Firebrand or eating at Reds. So I suppose you guys would like to put this lot to a better use by being able to develop it. Since they operate a commercial business and would like to have a wider opportunity to provide the most economic benefits in the city of Seward, they would like to rezone it to auto-commercial, which would provide them the opportunity to develop it commercially or, or and provide housing as well on these lots. The city staff of building department, fire department, public works, harbor, police and electric had no comments. And property owners within three hundred feet were notified. And the staff has recommend approval of Resolution 2022-17, recommending city council approve amending the land use plan and rezone lots twenty-one and twenty-three, block ten, original townsite of Seward Lobner Edition from urban residential to auto-commercial zoning district.
Okay, I'll leave it to public hearing at this point. Anybody have anything to offer?
We have signed in Carol Griswold.
Thanks.
Carol Griswold, Inside City Limits. On April nineteenth, twenty nineteen, P&amp;Z approved a CUP to allow parking lot on these lots to help reduce congestion on adjacent residential streets. Many neighbors turned out to support this use as both employees and Exaclation Guides' customers were parking all along Second Avenue, blocking their driveways and adding traffic to a quiet street. If, as stated in the packet, the majority of their clients do not park the lot, the parking lot is still very useful and needed for employee parking, kayak equipment and trailer storage, and passenger van parking. There is not enough room on their business lot. I doubt that this parking lot is primarily used by individuals exploring the harbor or Reds customers as they are both some distance away. The lot is not needed for lagoon users. Firebrand customers have a more convenient lot to park. If the existing signage and demarcation are not adequate, Exaclation Guides should work on that, not shut it down. If Exaclation Guides intends to shut down the parking lot and develop it for a different use, they will need to ensure that employees and customers do not once again park along Second and Van Buuren, creating congestion, blocking driveways and impacting the neighborhood. They will need to park their kayak trailers and vans elsewhere as well. Second Avenue is an amazing quiet alternative to busy Third Avenue. People walk their dogs, parents walk babies in strollers, and other pedestrians and bikers enjoy the scenery, salmon swimming in the stream, birds and other wildlife. The lots are currently zoned urban residential, which is compatible with the single-family zoning it faces across the street to the south. The UR zoning across the street to the west and the park to the north. Urban residential will allow housing and retain the residential use of Second Avenue. Providing the most economic benefit to Seward is not a valid reason to rezone to auto-commercial. The applicant's plans are vague and do not necessarily include housing. Higher density housing in allowing UR if developed is not a benefit to this neighborhood. There are many even more incompatible uses allowed in the auto-commercial zone. The applicant did not answer the question of the effect of the zoning amendment on the community. I believe it has great potential to return this area to a zone of complaints and conflict. The intent of Title fifteen code is to provide for orderly development, promote safety and public order, protect public health and general welfare of the citizens of the community. Changes to the zoning are based on public necessity, convenience or general welfare. A rezone from UR to AC will not promote safety or public order, protect public health and general welfare. This rezone is not based on public necessity, merely private benefit. As noted, the future land use map is a guide for more balanced, compatible land use mix, separating incompatible uses and minimizing conflicts between land uses. Retaining urban residential will help retain that balance and minimize conflicts. The auto-commercial zone along busy Third Avenue makes sense. An automatic rezone of an adjacent property surrounded by residential uses does not. Please vote to deny this rezone. Thank you.
Do you have anybody else?
No, ma'am.
Is the applicant present?
Ryan Fisher, I do live out of town, business, Exaclation Guides. With all due respect, the business on ten thirteen Avenue does not need to provide parking. And so therefore, it's not really an issue with this particular lot to be considered. It would be similar if another kayaking company also did not have a parking lot, but then purchased a parking lot somewhere else and then was told that they needed to use that parking lot and have a part of that piece of land as a parking lot. So we're going to stop using it as a parking lot regardless. Like I said, our clients do not really drive to it there and we can easily put them over in a city, but... There were only two complaints from back in the day anyway, and no driveways were obstructed. And within a couple of weeks, we instructed all of our employees to start parking, not parking. We stopped doing it. We haven't had any issues with any neighbors since three years ago. So I don't really see it as an issue at all. With this being auto-commercial, you know, we can then decide what we do want to do with it, if it's a better use. It's never been developed, it's just been sitting there. I don't see anyone wanting to build a house next to the Firebrand or where that area is anyway, or has been. So long-term housing is something that we're pretty passionate about. We also walk stovers up and down Second Avenue with our families. My friend and I have lived here for over twenty years, we have families here. And we see the housing issues here as a critical to helping the growth of the town. And so that's why we've also bought other properties in town to create long-term housing for them. And that's something that we're pretty passionate about. Whether we do that with this or another business, we're not sure yet, but we can't decide that until it is rezoned and we can line up investment for that. We can't do that until it is rezoned to something that's more appropriate for where it is. I think it's also part of the ten-year plan to kind of make these lots that aren't really being used useful to the town and to the residents.
Any questions for the applicant?
I don't know.
Yeah, I have a couple. That's what I'm sorry. I, you know, I appreciate that what you want to be able to do, you know, to develop some of the property. If it does not go to AC, what would you do with it?
We're not sure. You know, like, we had the opportunity to purchase it, so we jumped on it. We feel like we got a fair price for it, so... There are certain things that we can build there to help our business, but it just seems like kind of a waste because, like I said, we're never going to build a home there. And I doubt anyone else would have ever built a home there.
Would you build a punk house?
We don't.
And how many guides you have?
Yeah, we don't need housing for our guides. We have, we have, we provide housing for our guides. We have plenty of it. And we employ a lot of locals who have their own house and live here year-round. So it's kind of something we've focused on throughout our years, is to try to get as many people to want to live here year-round. Done pretty well at that, and so... Yeah, the only thing is, it's either going to, I don't know, maybe we could put a shop there or something, but we really don't want to. We want to develop it and...
And you can't develop it in the UR, you have to develop what you're considering only in auto-commercial.
Yeah, as an auto-commercial, then, you know, it gives us options. And, you know, like I said, like, we're not seasonal, like we live here year-round. And everything we've done in this town has been to better our enjoyment of living here. And so we're not going to build something or do anything that would immediately anger our neighbors. We have good relationships with them now. So it'll all be done tastefully with respect to the community.
Anybody else have anything to ask? Administration, anything further to add or? No? Okay. Madam Clerk, can I call for the vote?
Voting on the approval of Resolution 2022-017. Burhe?
Yes.
Hornsop?
Yes.
Staggs?
Yes.
And Chair Sullivan?
Yes.
That resolution is approved.
Okay, the next public hearing, it's Resolution 2022-18. Madam Clerk, could you please read that into the record?
Resolution 2022-018 is rescinding Resolution 2021-014 and recommending city council and Keneath Peninsula Borough approval of the preliminary right-of-way acquisition plat for the Seward Airport located in T one north and one south, R one west, section thirty-four, thirty-five, two and three, Seward Meridian Southwest, that point known as Seward Airport. Physical location, two-three-one-zero Airport Road. Acquiring and replating various legals located in sections thirty-four, thirty-five, two and three, Seward Meridian Southwest.
Thank you. Administration, could I, um, please, could you motion?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, nice to you, yeah. Make a motion on that, please. I need a motion and a second. Press it into it.
A motion approval of Resolution 2022-018.
I'll say.
Okay, okay, now. Administration.
So last year, Resolution 2021-14 was passed to approve the preliminary right-of-way acquisition plat for Seward Airport. However, there were conditions imposed with that resolution. Those three conditions were to provide public access to the beach to the south of the airport property, install a fire hydrant and bring water and sewer to the airport facilities. However, the state of Alaska, Department of Transportation and Public Facilities is using federal funds to finance the Seward Airport improvement project. And funding constraints and federal oversight limit what improvements can be implemented in this project. So they cannot use federal funding to provide these three public improvements. However, the public will continue to have the right to navigate the water, on the water and to walk on the exposed tideline, tide lands at low tide to the south of the airport property. Fire protection for the Seward Airport is provided by tank water on both Seward fire engines and tankers provided by an automatic aid agreement with Bear Creek Fire Department. And unfortunately, extending and installing utilities to the leased lots on the Seward Airport property is not an eligible cost for this federal funding. The Keneath Peninsula Borough requires documentation from the city that these conditions in Resolution 2021-14 that was passed last year are no longer required, which is why we are needing to review this new resolution. This new resolution would simply approve the preliminary replat and acquisition replat for the airport. And if you look on page... Fifty. There's a map of the airport. And you can see which parcels, so parcel number one is currently owned by Civil Air Patrol. That needs, needs to be acquired by the DOT and then replatted. And then parcel five is located in the tide lands and is owned by the city of Seward. That also needs to be... That also needs to be acquired by the DOT before it is replatted. So this replat only authorizes that this is an agreeable, you know, boundary for the new proposed Seward Airport improvement project. It does not acquire those lands. That is an additional step the DOT will need to take. It's simply, is just looking at whether these lands are, would be appropriate if they were replatted, if they are required by the DOT and replatted to extend the runway. So, staff, city staff had no comment except the fire department did agree that the fire hydrant is not required by locally adopted civic code for this project. And community development staff does recommend approval of Resolution 2022-18, which would rescind Resolution 2021-14 and recommends City Council and Kenan Peninsula Borough approval of this preliminary right-of-way acquisition plat for the Seward Airport.
That's a lot more. Okay, um, Commissioner's on it.
We do have one person and that is Carol Griswold.
Carol Griswold inside city limits. Contrary to what the packet says, I believe City Council did review Resolution 2021-14 and approved the water and sewer hydrants and public access conditions. However, they denied the acquisition of Tyland's parcel five due to the low price offered to the city of this valuable city land. The city is still waiting for a new offer. So I don't know what this process was, when they denied it. Now it comes back without what council approved. But I understand why a DOT would not want to provide those utilities and access. The attached DOT preliminary right-of-way acquisition plat has not been updated to show that parcel four was expanded from a slice to the entire privately-owned parcel and was acquired by DOT in June. The aerial map on page 46 labeled preliminary right-of-way acquisition plat only shows the existing DOT parcel, not the additional parcels one, expanded parcel four, and five. Would be helpful to have a correctly labeled graphic showing this existing airport parcel and another with parcels one, four, and five for the plat. The subdivision review does not include parcel four expanded, nor does the resolution. Before this goes to council, I hope P&amp;Z will require that these descriptions, graphics, and plats be updated to clarify the resolution.
Commissioners? Questions? Done? Pretty complicated.
I'm confused now, so I thought this was... I thought the utilities were part of the reason they weren't going to develop this. Going to fact we required them, but... Does anybody...
Originally, in the original one, the utilities were required as part of the replating, the different things, or the fire hydrants and things, electrical lights, everything else like this. And from my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, Courtney and Jason, is the state came back and said it was incompatible with the grant application, that they could not put that stuff in. But I guess what I understand is, my question would be is, well, if they wanted it, can't the borough or the state pony out their own money to put that stuff out there if they wanted it enough? But that's probably an aside, you know, from there. The... So that's what I thought. But my concern is, did, is there somewhere that council actually approved it? It doesn't then sort of kerfuffle the entire operation to actually approve? Is that, you know?
We found no record in legislative history that council did approve it. However, even if council approved it, it goes to the Borough and then the Borough looks back to us...
And they shot it down.
To get the verification that the DOT has provided, you know, the public access, the utilities, the fire hydrant before they approved the final plat. So we would still have to have a new resolution that rescinds those three requirements to then pass through.
Okay.
And my understanding is that the grant funds they might actually transfer for the project and tell those things are basically, they can't have certain things tied to it.
Tied to.
Yeah, so it's...
Irrespective where the funding can come from, probably?
Yeah.
There, I thought from what I was reading, there was something about the flood zone. Because it's in flood zone, the DOT is having trouble, you know, took the money into that. I guess we even had an higher flood zone or something? I don't know how we did about that, it's like we still need to raise it and fix it. But how do you go about that if it won't allow it? Or maybe, I just haven't gotten enough of it figured out yet.
I think also too, what this portion that we were looking at is, it almost likes for irrespective of all those different things that we're trying to, you know, for lack of a better term, outline what the battlefield is and what people can agree upon so they can go and fight it. You know, whether it's DOT, whether it's the Civil Air Patrol, whether it's the City of Seward. That's sort of, I think, so you're sort of demarcating the agreed-on parameters of where this all is and then once we replat it, then it moves to the next step and the other people battle it out, but we have to have an agreement as to what, I guess, the boundaries are. You know, correct me if I'm wrong, this is my understanding, so...
I'll make a motion to amend the Resolution Point 31-014 so that we can rehash it back out.
Is that an amendment or postponement or?
Make a amendment.
No, we can't amend 2021-14 because it's already the current resolution, so...
So amend Section 1?
So you can only amend or change this current Resolution 2022.
Yeah, because that was last year's 2021, so that was done and gone and that got shot down. Now they had to bring this one back up to, I guess, readdress the items, the things that they can't do with the lighting and the sewer and the access to the tide lands.
Okay, so can I amend Section 1 of this to do it?
I don't know. Can we? So what would you like to say?
Just bring the, bring it back up for discussion. Amend Section 1 on here.
Which page are you on?
37 at the moment, 38.
So 45 with...
I have 45 where?
Yeah, I've been sliding around a little. Trying to read through that.
So you were, are you amending it to go to do something else about it? I mean, this, right now we're just outlining the outline, basically, of what all the different areas are that they can actually go in and discuss, whether it's DOT, CAP, and the rest. What was your intent?
Just get it back over to where we can work on it.
So you...
To be able, because something needs to happen with it. I don't want just like let it go behind us.
No, but say for example, we decide to look at it and say we approved it because this is only, then it goes forward, then they continue working on it.
I think that's what I was...
Is that, is that what you're looking at?
Yeah, sure so.
I think you had, Cece had something to offer?
Yeah, I just, we're dealing with the federal government. I understand grants and all that, but I really want to make sure that we make certain that the citizens of Seward still have access and to the tide lands and also, you know, south where all the, I mean, there's an incredible field of wildflowers and mountains where a lot of families go and get clothes for Christmas cards, et cetera. So I just really want to make sure that whatever decisions are made, we protect our own people and our access to what is our land.
Understand, thank you.
Thank you.
And I think with that in mind, that would wind up being, I think, a follow-on discussion when they finally decide, when they are discussing it all, where the accesses are. If we can't make that, you know, once the plat goes forward, then you have, you know, it winds up being council and the DOT and everybody, all the other players there. So again, that I guess would be where and when they would actually have that determination, I think, being made. And that's where, I think, some of that comes up. We're just, like I'm saying, where the outline is, they're agreeing upon the area of discussion where they're trying to figure it out, whether it winds up being going forward or not. But they have to agree on what they're all talking about, sort of like working off the same map.
Right, and is this an appropriate use of these lands to be replatted for the use of the airport, appropriate acreage size? You know, those are the type of things that we're looking at with this replat currently. I mean, there's lots of other issues that are involved with it that, you know, we don't probably like to be involved with and looking at, but are, the responsibility of the commission is to look just at the replat, the boundaries of these lands, is inappropriate for this project?
Right, yeah, absolutely. So does any other commissioners have anything to offer?
Yeah, just the, it would be helpful if we could get that map updated on 46 before it goes forward, I guess.
So I did speak with Joy Vaughn, who is the DOT project manager, and requested an updated map. And she said the map will be updated for the final, when the final replat is submitted because this is just a preliminary replat. So yes, that parcel, parcel four, is no longer that small sliver. The entire parcel was acquired. It was previously owned by Steve Lear and now the DOT owns that. And they, it was removed from this replat, the wording in this replat resolution because due to the fact that they acquired the whole parcel, they won't need to replat just that small portion anymore. So, they will only be replating parcel one and parcel five.
I have a bit of a technical question and so maybe they'll help me understand because we're talking about preliminary and final replat, or right-of-way acquisition plat. What is the, what transitions it can become preliminary to final?
So it's a preliminary replat as it goes through the commission, planning, commission here, the City of Seward, and then to the Borough. The Borough, once the Borough reviews everything, the recommendations made here and the City Council and then their own staff recommendations, the plat gets sent back to the applicant who then makes all of those adjustments to the plat and then resubmits it to the Borough as a final, as a final replat. Then the Borough reviews that final replat and then either approves or denies it at that time.
Okay. So there wouldn't be some, you know, significant changes per se? I mean, I know Carol had brought up some certain areas that hadn't been, you know, maybe annotated a certain way. It won't expand it out, you know, because we're voting on the one area, you know, so to speak, you know, the entire area, but would they wind up, if we approved this, could they just arbitrarily change the boundaries or on what we're looking at? Because I think that goes with what Brendan was saying, you want to be sure of an updated map to reference.
From my understanding, if there were significant changes to preliminary replat, then it would be sent back to the city for review.
And that means it would come back to us?
Correct.
Okay. I just want to be sure I didn't say that, you know, I just want to let something go downrange and then, then, you know, you've lost control of the horse and the carriage.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Anybody else have anything to offer? No? Madam Clerk, can we have a vote, please?
Can I make a request, please, for someone to make amendment in Section 1 to add, at the very beginning of Section 1, the words rescinding Resolution 2021-014, comma? Because it's, as it's stated in the title, the sections are actually the legally binding portion of the resolution and I think it's important to reiterate that you're rescinding Resolution 2021-014.
So you're gonna stick that into Section 1?
At the very beginning, Section 1.
At, on page 45?
Page 45.
Got it, okay. That sounds, that would be good if...
Would someone, would you...
I'll make a motion to amend Section 1 to add rescinding Resolution 2021-14.
Okay. Thank you.
So now do we vote on the amendment?
Yes.
Okay, well then, Madam Clerk, can we have a vote on the amended version of the current resolution of 2022-018?
Yes, voting on that amendment. Hornsett?
Yes.
Verhe?
Yes.
Stags?
Yes.
Chair Sullivan?
Yes.
That amendment was approved, your main motion is back on the floor.
Okay. Anybody have anything to address on the main motion, otherwise we'll go ahead and vote on that. All right, Madam Clerk, can we have a vote on that?
Voting on the approval of Resolution 2022-018 as amended. Stags?
Yes.
Verhe?
Yes.
Hornsett?
Yes.
Chair Sullivan?
Yes.
That resolution is approved.
Okay, now we're moving on to unfinished business and appears we do not have any new businesses that we could look at as our discussion for our August work session.
And I would like to make a note that the date that's set on there is technically like our normally scheduled date, but at the, and at the beginning of the year, we forgot to put that in there, but that is the week. And so I believe that we look to postpone that till the following Tuesday, the 23rd. So I'd like to make that amendment and then for that 23rd work session, we want to continue to finish our work on the community land plan that we started last work session.
Great, if we, and I don't know if we'll have time, but if we have, I'd like to continue, at least have it on the back burner to look at as one of the short-term rental stuff, because I felt we were trying to push forward with that with a self-composed suspense, to try and get that sort of at least gel well enough toward the end of the year.
Yeah.
So if we can do that as well. Now, if we don't get to it, then we can do it in a subsequent one, but we'll just drive on from there. Okay, so any other input you guys may have to offer? Okay, so informational items and reports? Okay, well, Jason already discussed it, they reminded the work session is gonna be 6:00, it'll be on the 23rd, because the election day isn't 16th. And our next regular meeting is September 6th, on your calendars. And now that we're done with the official business, we're on to citizens' comments and all the citizens have left, so we're good to go there. So, I guess what we'll do is have board and administration comments. Administration?
I want to thank all of you for coming, glad you could have a meeting tonight. Appreciate your worth and time to review packets and provide input.
It makes it a lot easier if everybody read it through and, you know, sort of wrap the brains around it a little bit, sort of more to digest it all at once, sitting.
Okay.
Anything, Jason or anybody else?
No, just thank you, appreciate you guys' work.
Thank you. Jordan? Brendan? I'd like to thank you guys because I know you have to put up with us and some of our challenges, you know, we come off sometimes with some, you know, out of the blue ideas and, you know, you're just driving on trying to get the business of the city done and we sometimes throw a little bit of a handkerchief into some of your operations. And I really appreciate everything you've done. Brenda, Selena, thank you for all the stuff that I have. Selena's done tons of work on those maps and they are just amazing. They are so much more clear and everything else. And Brenda, your patience with us and your guidance and tutelage with the process of holding meetings. I'm sure she's biting her tongue out and talking to them, but thank you all, I appreciate it. So if nobody has anything else, I will adjourn the meeting at 20, oh, excuse me, at 8:09.